...here, all our citizens, and address any of your questions and concerns not on the agenda. I know, okay, we have one coming.
Is there somebody else that wanted to come up?
Well, we have another one, too, but just fine.
Oh, look.
Go ahead. We want everybody to speak.
Well, my name is Jordi Trapasso. I live at 8341 North Kidder Road. And I just wanted to ask, is there any new information or action involving the City of Milton and the DOT concerning the I-30 and I-90 interchange to Coniem or annexation petition?
To my notice, to my knowledge, no. Other than the fact that there's going to be informational meeting at Thursday, but that's going to be for the roundabouts and things. I think Watson's going to be present in Edgerton, isn't it, Linda?
There's a meeting. There was a meeting that has already been scheduled between Watson and the DOT, and the city was invited to come.
The city was invited to attend on Thursday?
Yes, for informational purposes.
Okay. Is the city or someone from the city going to be attending that meeting?
I personally am not. I don't know if any other council members are.
Okay.
I am.
You're attending the meeting Thursday? Okay. Because it gets a little confused. When I was here two weeks ago at the last meeting, I thought it was decided that there wasn't going to be further action until some, there's been more movement or an annexation request been submitted. So, did something change between now and then that prompted the city to use resources?
The city's not using resources. It was just invitation for individuals to come.
Okay.
And no city resources are going to be used.
Okay. But did something develop? I mean, I guess I'm curious because I just want to understand.
As far as, as far as I know, nothing.
And again, all the person, Don, the, just because of open meeting requirements on an item such as addressing questions and concerns on an agenda, basically what you can do is present your concerns and questions to the council, and they can take note of that, and they can respond to your, and research your question and respond later, but they can't engage in a discussion on particular items at this point in time because they're not noticed on the agenda. So, it's not that they don't want to, it's just that because of the open meetings law, they're, they're regulated and prohibited to, from getting into, involve discussion with anybody on the topics.
Okay.
So, that's, just to note that.
Okay. Well, whether the question can be answered or not, I just, I, I'll just put the question out there, maybe it can be part of the minutes. I just, I myself, I am just wondering if something has transpired since the last meeting that would prompt the city to, or anyone acting on behalf of the city to attend a meeting.
Okay. I'm going to let our new administrator, Al Hulick, address the question.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. Although I'm a new guy on the block, I was invited to the meeting on, on Thursday. It's my understanding that the meeting is a standing monthly meeting with the Department of Transportation. It's a meeting that happens every month between the Department of Transportation and the City of Milton in regards to a variety of issues. It's my understanding that Mr. Watson will be in attendance at that meeting, and that I myself will be in attendance at that meeting as I would, whether he was in attendance or not. But, you know, it's my intention to be there, to represent Milton and discuss the issues in regards to whatever the DOT has to discuss as far as the interstate project or, or the interchange project. But, to my, to my knowledge, this is a regular meeting, and there's no new information at this meeting.
Okay.
I think that's really what you're trying to do.
That's, yeah, that's the reason I'm asking is because I, is something new? Did I, did something transpire? I haven't heard anything since the last meeting. So, I was just wondering, did something new come about that would prompt this meeting to take place? So, that's the reason why I was asking.
The answer would be no.
Okay. Thank you.
Larry, you want to come forward?
I am Larry Clift, 1149 Brown Drive, here in Milton. I am the individual that sent the letter to Mayor Fraser involving swag and Watson issue. I guess I'm coming from a different standpoint than last year. It would appear to me, and what I hear is that the state, the DOT, is offering the city a chance to reconsider their position on the interchange.
No. If you step back, Larry, I think.
Okay. I sure can.
I think that'll work.
I'm used to yelling around the farm, so.
That's okay.
But I understand, is my understanding, that the current position is not to be part of an effort for the interchange. If that is the case, I would like to ask the council to reconsider that decision. Anything that might happen, Watson or not, I think the interchange at M and I-90 is a tremendous enhancement to the City of Milton. We, what a location that is, what an asset to the City of Milton. The location here in southern Wisconsin, we have access to virtually everywhere in the state of Wisconsin. And to have an asset like that and not take advantage of it, I think would be a terrible mistake. Now, did, did you folks get a copy of my letter? You all have one, and that, because if you don't, I have one here I could hand out. I do have a little supplement that would go with it on a couple of them controversial issues. Would you care to have, I'll hand that out and...
Actually, if each would take, take two, not two minutes, and I'm going to...
What you will see here are just my thoughts, mine only. Is everybody here totally familiar with what swag is? I would, myself assess it as maybe one of the best things to come along for Rock County agriculture and maybe forever. They're an ad hoc group of professional ag people and farmers. They have a solid business plan, a good working organization. They have just been turned down, I would say, by the City of Evansville and are now looking for a new home. And I would like to claim that Milton is the best site in the world for them. We have everything to offer. As you would look at that, the letter I sent the mayor. Location, I have a location, location, location. All of you, I would ask you to study that site. It's, boy, everything that they need. Going down to the middle of the right players, we've talked about swag. Bill Watson, local owner, he's interested, and he has the one with all to deal with us. The other one is our governing bodies, is that you folks, the City of Milton, the towns of Fulton and Milton, all are a solid agriculture base with capacity to absorb the development that might take, that swag might bring. The right use of the site, the property is entirely agriculture. It wouldn't be a lot of development, I'm sure, but it could still be carried on with a rural theme and to continue the heritage of the agriculture. I feel that as Rock County Fair Board looks for a new site for a fair, what better place could you find with accessibility and the potential that they have at that site? Another item is jobs. The potential here with a swag at full steam, there'd be a huge number of professional jobs. We're talking about agriculture entities that would be worldwide application. I feel that the sky is the limit to the possibilities. That second sheet I handed out was a few thoughts that I have on some other issues that have been controversial with that swag, well, development, Watson development more than that. The issue of mining, I think, gets terribly abused. I would ask any, you folks or anybody that wanted, as the mining issue is discussed, to take a look at our farm. In 1991, we had a mining operation in conjunction with the Rock Road Corporation where they took 500,000 tons of material off a 10-acre site. And if you should go out there and look at that site today, if you don't have a trained eye, I'm sure there isn't a one of you that would recognize that there was ever a mining operation there. The key to the mining ordinances, which both town of Fulton and the town of Milton have to deal with mining, and in Rock County has a mining ordinance that is the final say, or the final cat to be kicked, if you would. Part of that Rock County ordinance is a reclamation program. Are you folks all aware of the reclamation plans for the two huge pits, mining operations located right here in town? I would ask that question. If you don't, I'm going to suggest that you do study that, the Rock County Mining Ordinance Reclamation Plan. They are in place, and they're sunset, so it's, will be the closing of the two operations. But I think the most critical thing right now, if it is the city's position not to take part in the interchange effort, I would, I would like to see that given consideration. It's, I feel far too important for the future of the City of Milton to pass up an opportunity to have this type of facility here right in the Milton area. So, are there any questions or? Here, you guys, I have...
One of the considerations is the cost when we do need a new fire station also. And with that cost factor in mind, we have...
I have to remind, I have to remind that we cannot...
I think my attorney is going to slap my hand.
Yeah.
Okay. No problem.
We can't discuss this, because it's not on the agenda at this point.
Yeah, and I accept that.
But we accept, we, thank you for coming and passing out information and giving your thoughts.
Very good. I guess if I'm to have anything to say, I, we are, Jane and I are fortunate enough to spend the winters in Arizona, and I have a special project while I'm in Arizona, so I may not ever have a chance to be back to have something to say. That's kind of why I'm here tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who has a concern that's not on the agenda? All right, if not, we will move, we will move to item three, the sworn in of the City of Milton Police Officer Joseph Fox.
This one, they have got the no family members, want to take some pictures, so they're right there.
Hi. This room's moving. I, state your name.
I, Joseph Anthony Fox.
Having been hired as a police officer.
Having been hired as a police officer.
For the Milton Police Department.
For the Milton Police Department.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And faithfully and impartially discharge.
And faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, John. Good for about 20 years, then, at least? All right. Thank you for coming in, family members.
Thank you.
All right.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I. I just would like to remind everyone to use their microphones. We've been told that we are not, people in the audience cannot hear us.
So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. We'll go to item five, public hearing for Agnew Drive Special Assessments. Howie, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, it will, actually, Don, you have to, just as a point of order, you have to open the public hearing first.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I haven't done this before. All right, so we're, open the public hearing for the Agnew Drive Special Assessment.
Okay. Over on Agnew Drive, we're going to resurface the street. We did receive a LRIP grant for part of the pavement for that. The surface will be taken off and just repaved with a new surface. There is one property that does have to have some curb and gutter work done, and the city ordinances allow for a 50% reimbursement or assessment for curb and gutter replacement. So, the properties were noticed, there was notice in the paper, and the, you know, the owners of the property did receive a notice that there would be an assessment hearing. And this work is planned to be done this fall. Frank Brothers is the contractor for the work, for the pavement work.
Okay. Do we need any other action on this?
Well, if, if someone wants to speak.
Is there anybody here to speak on the issue?
Yeah, if any of the owners are here, or if they want to say anything.
Okay, so then do I close the hearing then?
Yeah.
All right. So, then I close the public hearing for the special assessment. Then we'll go to item six, the old business, a discussion of possible action regarding Resolution 2014-19, special assessment on Agnew Drive.
Okay. And you have, in your package, you have the Public Works Report, and that shows the property that would have the assessment of, there's 20 feet of curb and gutter that needs to be replaced. It's $9.75 per foot. It'd be $195 for an assessment to that property if you, if you choose to levy an assessment.
Okay, so what action do you need from us?
Well, at this point, you would, if you, per city ordinances, if you want to continue with your past policy of assessing the curb and gutter for the replacement, then you would vote on an assessment if you want to assess that property.
All right, do I have a motion on that?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the special assessment. And do I, does it have to be Resolution 2014-19?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say?
Aye.
All right, those opposed? All right, motion carries. Item B, discussion of possible action regarding City of Milton Unison Site Management Cell Tower Agreement. I'll refer to Mr. Hulick for this one.
Thank you, Council President. Before I came into this position, Finance Director Nelson gave me a briefing on this, but he is much better versed and has more history on this item, so he'll be doing the staff presentation on this item, but we'll both be available for questions, obviously.
About a month and a half ago, the council agreed to the financial terms with Unison for leasing the water tower space on the two towers in the amount of $215,000 today and another $215,000 in 20, 20 more years. There's also a caveat in that contract that says if Unison obtains another lease that goes on one of the towers, the city shall receive 50% of whatever is agreed upon. So, it is in Unison's best interest to try to get another company to lease space. And there is no one on city staff that is probably qualified, nor are we pursuing any options to obtain additional leases on the towers. And currently, the water fund balance of cash is, is a little low, not dangerously low, because we did pay off some debt earlier this year to save $30,000 some thousand. But these dollars would be used to help with future capital needs in the water utility. And I'll refer to Attorney Schrader for any other details.
I have a question. Are we still, do we still have U.S. Cellular, or did we give them 30 days' notice?
Didn't know the answer.
Yes, U.S. Cellular remains a tenant, and, and the purpose of the agreement is in part to assign the lease from, that's now between the city and U.S. Cellular, to Unison.
And the, we're getting actually quite a bit more renting from U.S. Cellular, correct? Per month?
The, the gross amount of the U.S. Cellular lease, if it continued over the maximum period of time, which is roughly, is it 20, 25 roughly?
Something like that, yeah.
Something like, would be more than the $215,000. That's correct.
How much more?
Yeah. That, I don't recall, that information was presented previously in reference to the terms agreement, but I don't have that.
I did a present value calculation, rather than just looking at nominal dollars, because obviously there's a time value money component. And if you take the current monthly rent that we get now, over the next 20 years, and assume it stays flat, Unison will be receiving a 7.6% rate of return on their 215,000, their first $215,000 investment. But the net profit agreement that is in your packet also alludes to the fact that starting on June 30th, 2026, the city receives a 50% share of whatever that incremental difference in rent now is and what it is 12 years from now.
Have we seen their books to see what their net profits actually are? Because usually businesses don't show net profits. So, what, have we looked at their books?
I have not seen their books, because after talking with Attorney Schrader last week, the financial terms of the agreement were approved six weeks ago, and therefore that, that piece of the negotiation kind of left.
So, but the contract hasn't been approved?
Correct.
And this language is on the contract. Right.
Mark, it's the net profit agreement and that easement agreement that haven't been approved, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We have not seen, nor have we requested, anything that I am aware of from Unison on this. Is that correct?
Yes. My, my role in reference to the Unison has been to first discuss with them the legal terms of the terms of agreement, which you reviewed, and following some revisions on the part of Unison regarding the legal terms had approved, which sets forth the financial terms of any subsequent agreement, as Dan has indicated. And that terms of agreement is subject to Unison and, and the city entering into the easement and assignment agreement and the net profits agreement. So, that's, and I've then, since the terms of agreement were approved by the council, then my role has been to work on the legal terms of the, of those two documents. And so, I have not asked for any financial documentation from Unison, which, I have not asked for any financial documentation regarding their, their operations, nor have we investigated the financial end of this agreement. I've been focusing on the, the legal aspects. So, that, that's, that's a council issue in terms of the, whether the, the financial terms are, are adequate and appropriate. Not a legal one.
And for the council, and I talked with the mayor this afternoon about this issue. One of the things that this money could be used for is to prop up our water in department, the money we have in our water department. Dan, would you want to address that issue?
Correct. The, like I said earlier, the water fund is running low on cash, and that was, that was a planned move, because we did pay off debt 18 months early this, this past April, May, in order to save $30,000 over the next two years. And so, this cash could be used to prop the balance up to, on what I would call more of a normal level, or it could be set aside for future capital projects that would not need to be borrowed, would not need to come from the existing rate structure. But the money will just sit, sit parked in the, in the water fund until this body and the personnel and finance committee would approve any kind of expenditures.
Where do, where are our monthly payments that, that we're receiving from U.S. Cellular? Where are they going right now?
They're going into the water fund.
Okay, so we're receiving double monthly, double, if you divided it out over the years, and you looked at what we're receiving from U.S. Cellular and what we would be receiving monthly from Unison, Unison, we're receiving double from U.S. Cellular, if I remember correctly.
That's, that, your, your rough numbers are about, in terms of nominal dollars, the amount that we would collect over 20 years without factoring in time value money would be somewhere north of 400,000 versus the 215,000 that we're taking today, which is how I came up with that discount rate that Unison is essentially getting a 7.6% rate of return on its investment. The reason I did not explore the financial component to this contract in great detail last week was after consulting with Attorney Schrader, that part, that ship had kind of sailed from, from our dialogue. So, that's why I did not prepare a memo specifically outlining all the financial ramifications. Because I believe former Administrator Schutz's thought process in recommending this a month ago, month, a month or two ago, also was the notion that at any time, U.S. Cellular can opt out of its existing contract, and we receive a $5,000 one-time payment, and then we would receive nothing from them. So, conceivably, they could say on January 1, we are no longer interested in the towers in Milton, Wisconsin. We would receive $5,000, and then it would be up to us to try to find a replacement carrier to lease that space.
And can you give some examples where U.S. Cellular have done, has done that recently?
I am not aware of any, but that, I believe that was former Administrator Schutz's. In my conversations with him about this issue, that was the notion that at any point, U.S. Cellular could opt out, whether that was real or...
Imagined.
Or perceived, or, or whatever. It would be out for debate.
Okay. And in this contract, can we terminate ever this contract? Or only Unison can terminate it?
Only for breach.
Okay, so we actually never can opt out, essentially?
Correct.
They can with 30 days' notice, but we're tied in for ever 40 years. Okay, so we actually never can opt out, essentially?
Correct.
They can with 30 days of notice, but we're tied in for ever 40 years?
Potentially, yes. If they, if they say within two years decide to opt out, then at that point in time, the city still retains the $215,000.
And if we were to sue, can we get our attorney's fees and court costs recovered if they do breach the contract?
Yes, that was one of the revisions. Let me just look at that here. Yes, in the, one of the revisions I've requested in the wireless communication easement and assignment agreement discusses dispute resolution, and it's been revised to provide that any, if attempts to settle do not succeed, then either party commence an act, can commence an action in circuit court for Rock County. So we've specified the venue, and it's in Rock County. And it provides that the prevailing party in a legal proceeding shall be entitled to all costs incurred with the legal proceeding, including reasonable legal fees.
Reasonable, okay.
And that, that's a term means that normally it's just statutory. So when the term reasonable attorney's fees is put in there, that means that you recover your actual attorney fees, always subject to review of the court, of course. That's why they put in the term reasonable, because you could, if you choose, churn it and make it unreasonable. So that's why that language is put in there.
Maxine, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I'm just feeling that Vanessa does, we've been allowing them for 40 years, and they can opt out in 30 days, and we have no option available to us as the city. It seems to me the whole contract is good for Unison, but not for the city. I'm reading some of that.
I will say that if Unison gets ABC Cell Company to lease additional space on the towers, say, early 2015, that contract does say that we shall immediately receive 50% of any future rent. So if they get ABC Cell Company to lease space early in 2015 for $2,000 a month, the city will be receiving $1,000 a month for as long as that they're leasing space. And so if that, if they basically can get another company up there to contribute that same $2,000 that U.S. Cellular would be paying them, in terms of nominal dollars, the cash flow to the water utility would be null, because the cash flow would be the same.
Well, isn't that based on net profits though?
No, that net profits agreement, I believe, is just the agreement. I've read through that several times. I don't think that, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Schrader, but I do not believe, I think that's just the name of the document. Because the document that the council agreed to six weeks ago clearly states that any new companies that they may lease on our towers, we shall immediately begin receiving I believe the net profits agreement is just referring to the existing contract with U.S. Cellular.
Well, I guess my concern is, is how come it's okay for them to have a 30-day opt-out, but it's not good enough for the taxpayers to have a 30-day opt-out?
The 30-day opt-out is with U.S. Cellular, not Unison.
Right, right. So what I'm saying is, they can give us 30-day notice, but the taxpayers can't give them 30-day notice. I'm not talking about U.S. Cellular, I'm talking about in the new contract.
I'm assuming that's because of the upfront cash flow. If we were requesting monthly cash flow from Unison, a guaranteed cash flow, then there'd probably be more of an opportunity to opt out. But when a company is paying hundreds of thousands of dollars upfront, and the city would have the option of opting out six months down the road, that would clearly not be advantageous for any private business.
I just think what's, whatever is fair for them should be fair for us and the taxpayers. So I guess I wouldn't recommend approving this unless they're willing to treat us fairly, treat the taxpayers fairly.
Just an inquiry, or would you be suggesting then that if there was a similar provision inserted there, that the city would then be willing to pro-rata refund the $215,000?
Well, why wouldn't we?
That, I anticipate that would be necessary, so I just would raise that as part of the discussion, so.
Since we're not going to be spending it, it's only to prop up our sewer account or our water account.
Well, I don't want to disagree, but I will accept the contract the way it is. I would like to take the $215,000 now before we lose potentially more revenue, because I think we need it for our water fund to prop it up.
Yeah, and that's a decision for the council, you know, which way you want to go on that.
There's anybody else that wants to comment on this?
And I think it kind of goes back to former Administrator Schutz's notion that, yes, what you're saying is, if U.S. Cellular is around for 20 years and that contract sticks around for 20 years, you know, did the city get taken? I don't know, because there's definitely, it's not a 50/50 split, because you do have to look at the time value of money. My question, had I been asked to look at this in greater detail a couple of months ago, would have been, is the council comfortable with a 7.6% rate of return for Unison on a $215,000 investment over 20 years?
I don't think we have any guarantees from them on, you know, they aren't any more or less stable than U.S. Cellular.
Right. The only difference would be, we have their $215,000 today.
We can accept comments, but I think for the city of Milton, if you're not a city of Milton resident, it wouldn't be appropriate, probably.
I don't think anybody that has any knowledge of this type of agreement.
If we can...
Yeah, we'll do it all formal-like.
If you don't mind, I'm not going to use the speaker, I'll just talk louder, if that's okay with everyone. I did search on that 50/50, you know, in that contract from Unison. I found several occasions on the internet where people were having to fight for that. So if you have the attorney power to go after Unison, to go to fight for that 50%, because that's what they were having to do. There are many law firms that their whole existence is to fight for you guys going after this particular company. So just research that online. There must be a reason why so many law firms are making money, making their business against this one company. And search for that 50%, where people are having to fight for against this large firm. And you have the resources and the cash to proceed in that manner.
We need you to give your name and address, though, for our records.
My name, my name is Lance Fallon, and my address is 2022 East Minot Road in Milton, Milton. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I still believe that if we are looking at using our water towers as commodities, that we need to put it out there, because you don't know if we're going to get somebody that's going to give us more money. And in 20, 20 years, $215,000 is going to be a drop in the bucket.
Why can't we put out a request?
We should be able to. There's no reason that we should...
And yet, everything else we put out a request.
There's no reason that we should just take the very first company that wants to come in and utilize one of our best...
There's actually other municipalities that are doing that already.
Have they been using it? Is it already using it, are they, USA?
So I mean, you can go ahead and take a vote on the contract.
Well, I'm just saying, I think companies that need them have already, they know where their market is, they know where to find them. And I'm just afraid that, you know, I mean, I've looked in my lifetime, I mean, 20 years, I'm thinking 20 years ago, 1994, what was I using, a VCR with a, I mean, what technology has changed, I don't think that, you know, they're going to be around for 20 years. That's why I think it's important to take the money now.
Exactly. The technology is changing, and it's changing every day, and you don't know where it's going to go. So why would we want to make a commitment based on...
And it's 40 years, right?
Yeah, it's 40 years.
40 years. In 40 years, I hate to think of what...
None of us, well, some of us are not going to be around.
Maxine's on, we can't, I'm not going to let you talk...
I'm talking about me.
I just feel like this is very premature, and we should, we should put out there that we're willing to lease out our cell towers if we're going to take the time to do this for one company. And I understand that we definitely have issues with our revenues coming in for specific funds. But what do you want to give up? How much of Milton's future do you want to give up? How much future revenue possibilities do you want to give up? Just because the first time that somebody has come around outside of U.S. Cellular to say, "Let me take this," I just think it's a foolish thing to do. I'll make a motion that we do not approve this contract.
I have a second.
Second.
All right?
Thank you.
By the contract, what we're referring to is do not approve the net profits agreement and wireless communication easement and assignment agreement.
I don't want to approve any of it.
Okay, so we, okay.
Your microphone, Mark.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Aye. All right, motion fails.
No, the motion carries.
Our motion carries. Excuse me, motion carries. Motion carries. Right, so I guess, I guess since it's a motion to sign the contract failed, what direction should we give the mayor?
We need to look at alternatives.
Okay.
Or just stick with U.S. Cellular.
Well, that would be an alternative, you know, to evaluate the pros and cons of either leaving it as that, or look at, if that's not the best alternative, what other alternatives are there?
Maybe our intern could do some research. Do we still have an intern? Oh, we don't.
We have a youth apprentice from the school district.
Why don't we table this for a month and do some research and come back and talk?
Well, yeah, there's really, beyond reviewing the two documents, which were the wireless communication easement and assignment agreement and net profits agreement, which you had voted to not approve, there's really no other action noticed on the agenda. So that's where you can go right now. Then if you want to have this on the agenda for next meeting or future meeting, then I suggest that it be put on there for that purpose. That would be, that would be the best.
Try the second meeting next month. 30 days from now.
So do you want to inform the mayor, then?
Is this going to be 30 days, we're going to pursue an RFP, or just discuss other options for the cell tower as a commodity?
Yeah, I mean, my preference would be, in this situation, not understanding all the details of this contract, but my preference would be to go back to square one and look at our options altogether, not just Unison, not just U.S. Cellular, but do some research about what are the opportunities out there. Are there other companies like Unisource? What is the going rate that other communities are receiving right now? I know in Janesville, they have a water tower. Is $2,000 even a competitive rate? I think we need to kind of go back to square one, at least I do. So that's where I, you know, where I would, I would go with it from a staff level, is to make sure that we have all the information. Because again, this is the first company that's approached it. I've never dealt with this company before. In Janesville, we dealt with many cellphone companies, and this was the first time I'd seen this name. So it would, I would feel more comfortable making a recommendation at a future meeting with more information in my own mind. So I wouldn't want to say it's an RFP, or it's this or that at this time. That'd be my preference.
And I did talk with the Public Service Commission last week, just to ask them, like, what would this mean if we end up going for any kind of rate adjustments on future water rate things? And they said they haven't had a lot of experience with people basically selling off their tower lease rates. They said it came up a few years ago, and she couldn't remember what they determined because the question hadn't come up in the last two, three years.
Okay, by not accepting this contract, is it going to affect our water rates? Because we don't have a lot of money in our water?
I don't think so, because everything that, the main reason, like I said earlier, for the low balance is because we paid off debt early, so that will kind of self-correct itself next year. And we did save $30,000 by doing that, so...
So does that $30,000 that we saved go back into that account, then?
Right, it just won't get spent, so...
Okay.
But there's also things like, the ethanol plant, their water usage is down significantly this year. We're probably looking at $40,000 or $50,000 less in revenue from them this year, so good thing we saved $30,000 when you lose $50,000 in revenue. So, you know, there's a lot of different dynamics. It's not like the general fund where you have highly anticipated cash flows from tax receipts and from state aid and things like that. You know, it's a fund that's reliant on selling a commodity and collecting that, and then there's costs to pump that out of the ground and treat it and all that kind of stuff.
Okay, so we have, so let's move on. Item seven, new business, discussion of possible action regarding proclamation of freedom in the workplace for bullies. I have a proclamation that the mayor gave me to read on this, so I'm going to read it. Whereas the city of Milton has an interest in promoting the social and economic well-being of its citizens, employees, and employers, and whereas that well-being depends upon the existence of healthy and productive employees working in safe and abuse-free, work-free environments, and whereas research has documented stress-related health consequences for individuals caused by exposure to abusive work environments, and whereas abusive work environments are costly for employers, with consequences including reduced productivity, absenteeism, turnover, and injuries, and whereas protection from abusive work environments should apply to every worker and not be limited to legally protected class status based only on race, color, gender, national origin, age, or disability. Now thereas, I, Mayor Brett Fraser of the city of Milton, do hereby proclaim October 19th to 25th, 2014, as Freedom from Workplace Bullies Week, and commend the Wisconsin Healthy Workplace Advocates and the Workplace Bullying Institute, which raises awareness of the impact of and solutions for workplace bullying in the U.S., and encourages all citizens to recognize this special observance.
And since I'm on the Milton Youth Coalition, I'm the co-chair with Superintendent Tim Shiger, and we work throughout the whole city, making sure there's a lot of public awareness regarding the bullying issues and what we can do to prevent them. This is something that is very compatible with the values that we have in the city of Milton and the school district, so thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, item B, discussion of possible action regarding ordinance number 397, amending section 78 to allow professional and non-retail business offices. Howie, do you want to discuss this?
Yeah, I can. This was a plan commission last week. What they were proposed to do is to change the ordinance to allow non-retail business offices within some of the factories out in the industrial areas. Sometimes people want to outsource even some of their own business. One person wanted to have an employment office work inside of their factory as their own, as their own business, so that they could do the hiring for them and for other people. Presently, that wouldn't be allowed, so this is kind of a modernization, so that they can use some of the office space, you know, just as an outsourced type of thing. But it's for non-retail business offices only, so you couldn't have a sales office out there. But you could have someone working out there to do, you know, internet, computer, any types of business like that. There was, at the public hearing, we didn't hear any, actually any response from anyone opposing this ordinance, and it passed unanimously at the plan commission, and they recommended, we're asking for a recommendation for council to approve this.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance... I'll make a motion that we, um, approve ordinance three ninety seven, amending section seventy eight to allow professional and non-residential business offices.
Just, just to clarify, is the motion, as I understand, motion is to approve the first reading wave, the second and third, and adopt?
Yes, non-retail.
Okay, all right.
Did someone, did I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Um, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, all right, motion carries unanimously. All right, we'll go to general items. Next meeting date is October seventh, two thousand and fourteen. Mayor Olker Person reports, well, as, um, in behalf of Mayor Frazier, I would like to welcome our new administrator here tonight, Al Hillik. And so, uh, this is Al's first day on the job, and, and I heard him complaining when I talked to him earlier about the long drive he had to work today. I think it took him two minutes to get here, so, uh, I'm sure your gas budget's going to go up quite a bit. But we want to welcome you here. Yeah, you need my Prius, right. Are there any other, uh, Olker Person's reports, are you, Dave?
Yeah, last week, uh, I sent a letter to the mayor concerning problems we have here in the building and the fact that, uh, the progress was kind of stagnant, because it was disagreements between the general contractor and the engineering firm. I know you were looking at this. There were four items that stood out initially, and I told him, I said, I think we need to look at getting them fixed, paying the bill, and then go for cost recovery. And McGill stepped up. We had an issue with, uh, the door tracks on the overhead doors at the end on her. McGill has stepped up, and they're going to pay for the fix. They're going to do, start the fix tomorrow. Uh, we had some tile failures in the shower that's been fixed. And, uh, we've got, uh, an issue with the air quality, humidity levels. And there's a tentative fix there, it hasn't been done yet, it's not that expensive, but we can easily afford to have it done. And I think, Dan, they're looking for a report on the air balance or whatever.
Right, the, uh, adjusting the air intake will help with the humidity, but right now there's no humidity outside to be sucked into the building to test it. So I don't know when they're going to be able to do that and get that fixed in place. And then, yes, there is an air test report that we have not received yet.
Okay.
Is there still a furnace not working?
Yes, we have one furnace out of, out of three that is not working and is not providing heat. Nick, well, all three of them weren't working last week. Nick from DPW, thank God.
The Wonder Guy.
Yes, he is. Our most valuable employee, but anyways, he came and fixed two out of three furnaces, got them going. The gas was shut off and they weren't, uh, the pilot lights weren't lit. So we got two out of three going, the other one, uh, I don't know what happened, why it didn't come back today, but he thinks he can fix that one too. Otherwise, we'll just have RMW come over and get it done.
And the last item is probably the most serious, and that's the lock system. The most serious side is the PD side, there, but there are a number of issues here. And did that guy show up today, Dan?
No, um, that, that was rescheduled for Thursday.
Okay.
Yep.
We are going to get estimates from a couple of contractors to go through and fix the system. We can't keep going the way we're going. And that's going to be probably expensive, so that'll be coming back to the council.
My memo, I had met with Dan and went through all these and worked it all prepared, and those, those were the highlights.
Yeah. That's all I have.
And just for information, they, they fixed the tile in the women's shower, and the men's shower they fixed, however, it still runs out into the locker room, so the fix did not work. So we get an officer kicked out of his house and he needs to do showers at work, it's going to be running into the locker room, making a big mess, so.
Dan, so the, as far as the furnace goes, where, are, this is just a temporary fix, so we're not actually looking at replacing?
Not right now, we're going to look at replacing.
Okay, all right.
It's more that they need to be repaired. It was whether or not they were causing the air quality issue, um, but it doesn't appear to be the issue.
All right, good. Um, I had, um, I had some items. First off, I just want to invite everybody to our prairie seed collection. It is going to be October eleventh this year, it starts at nine o'clock this year, because our prairie at Crossridge Park has become so established, we are not going into Janesville at Rotary Gardens, we are just going to collect from Crossridge Park. The seeds that we collect are for the park itself, but then we also use it in different areas around the city, just for beautification and also because it reduces the cost of mowing. So I want to invite everybody to come out and do that. It's a, it doesn't matter how the weather is, it's always a nice day to be out there and be in the flowers and the prairies with the wild animals.
You can remind them, if they have kids, they got the playground to play on while they take seeds, so.
Yes, and we have the playground too. So our new playground and the current playground that's up closer to, to Brown Drive too. So the park is becoming, we're, we're working on it again, and hopefully we can get some more funds, so that we can continue to, to build that particular park. Um, and then I had some questions. I'm wondering if anybody has heard anything from the realtors who we selected to board the Eastside Industrial Park? Any?
I don't know, can we comment on that, Mark, or?
Uh, it's, it's just a report, so if we have a report, find if something can be discussed, if somebody has a report under, just heading a big report.
Well, maybe somebody could just check on that, because I haven't heard anything in a while, and I just am kind of wondering how that's working out. I know we had a limited, um, contract, a limited time for contracts, and if we need to move on to another realtor, then we probably should be doing that.
So do you want that as an agenda item for Al to update us at the next meeting?
Yeah, that would be good. That would be good. Um, and then also, um, the council previously talked about inner-city directional signing. Um, it was part of the discussion when we did our, uh, twenty-six signs and our new logos. And I was just wondering where that is going to be in the, uh, process at this point in time, now that we've got the highway signs out on twenty-six, I just feel like we should finish the project out.
That could be another item we could put on the agenda. Yeah.
That was your to-do list.
Anything else, Linda?
No, that's all.
Anyone else?
Are you going to talk about the ribbon cutting, Don?
I'll let you do that, you were there. I didn't make the picture, you did.
Oh, okay. So, we have the ribbon cutting for our, our playground at Crossridge, and this was our ribbon that we cut. These are all of the hands that helped build the playground, right here. So I asked Inga to put the ribbon back together and to display it, so everybody can see it in City Hall. These are all the hands, um, and it just shows what a great community we really have. And the people that let us in the playground build even commented about how they usually don't see so many volunteers come out to build a playground. So I think that really says a lot about our community, so we should be proud of it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, uh, city administrator, Al, do you have any reports for us?
I don't have a report right now, other than a to-do list, that's getting longer, no. No, but, uh, as, as Council President Vermaing said, today was my first day in the office. I'm still here, so that's a good sign. But, no, I want to thank everybody for all the support they've, uh, given me through this process and up until today, and I look forward to continuing to work with everybody. And, you know, one thing that, that I've already seen, and, uh, you know, it, uh, Councilman Wells just kind of commented on it, you know, the Milton slogan is a very simple slogan, "Community since eighteen thirty-eight." And, uh, somebody reminded me of that when I was going through this process, that it's simple, that Milton is a community. And it's very, very true, from the Crossridge Park, uh, playground built, built that, that I participated in, and to just simple things of, of driving around town today with, uh, with Dan Nelson and folks coming up to, so Dan and I on the street to congratulate us. I mean, it really is a great community and a, and a tight-knit group of people who care about their community and care about, uh, the people in it and, and what's best for the community. And, uh, I'm very happy and very proud to be a part of it and, and look forward to, uh, to building that relationship and continuing on with the, the good work that's already happened and will continue to happen. So thank you for having me, and I look forward to many more years. Maybe we'll be around to the end of that Unisource contract.
Let's give hello.
Oh, thanks.
All right, Chief of Police, Chief, anything for us?
No, I was just going to comment on building issues, but I think we went through that, uh, pretty well. And I'm happy that council members are so engaged in the building and, and hope Al will find it enjoyable. It's, I must say, it takes up a lot of my day, every darn day, and I'm kind of sick of it, but I'm glad that so many council members have jumped into the fray and are helping out on this, it's greatly appreciated.
Did you get your wall painted?
No, I have my tape on my wall that says accent wall, and that's all I have.
You had to bring that up.
We met two weeks ago, he was saying that it was supposed to be done like the day before, so.
I want to apologize, I missed our Director of Public Works. Howie, anything?
Splash Park's officially closed for the season. Brush collection does continue through the end of the month. The guys are out flushing hydrants. The surplus sale, even though there'll be an ad in the paper, um, will take place between October sixth, October fourteenth, with, uh, bids, um, opened on October fifteenth, if someone wants to, um, buy some of the surplus items. And then possibly in the paper, could you maybe mention something about people who stopped mowing into the grass? There's been a lot of it lately, and we spend about twelve thousand dollars a year on street sweeping for disposal. And every time they mow it into the grass, it just, into the street, it just adds to that cost. But there's, there's been quite a bit of it lately. We'd rather have them just stop than have to give them a ticket or something, so. If you could, we'd appreciate it, so, thanks.
All right, Dan, anything in the treasure?
I'm, uh, starting second week, and, uh, things are going very well. I'm going to start working on the budget document, uh, this coming, the, the rest of the week and then next week. And we should be on pace to meet all the deadlines that were in that budget calendar, with I think the first, uh, budget meeting being on October fourteenth, so.
Okay. All right, we don't have anybody from the library here, or the, uh, department or city clerk?
The chief is actually at the town board's budget meeting.
And before we adjourn, I want to just, uh, say, uh, James, I saw your resignation letter that you submitted. I read your email, so we're, we will miss you, but we want to wish you luck in your endeavor in Edgerton. So, I didn't get to read it too fully, because I was pretty busy. When, when, how long are you going to be here yet?
We'll be here through next Friday.
Okay, so you won't be at another meeting, so, all right. So we want to. Okay.
We do it every meeting, just so you know.
Well, I, I personally want to thank you. I think you've done a great job with the Milton Courier, and, uh, we will miss you. So find a good replacement. Okay. All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
You have a second. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.